Do I have to say that again?
You can if you wish. We're rolling. This is the board meeting, the December board meeting of the library trustees.
Okay, all right. So let's call the meeting to order. So we have the consent agenda. Do we all approve it? Oh, I think Clayton, you had something you wanted to say about your report.
So there's, well, there's two things to say. It's a dual consent agenda because we did not meet in November. So we should just make it clear for the minutes that we are approving, assuming everybody consents to both the October and November packets or consent agendas, which is the minutes financial reports and directors reports for both. And the piece that Donna you were referencing was I did want to include, just for the good of the order, that we were very pleased in my report, I talked about town meeting that happened in November. And our very own Michelle DeGrassio was asked by the Madame Moderator to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to kickoff town meeting this year, which we're very proud. I was very happy to help facilitate that and to help support Michelle as she led all of the town. So I wanted to make sure that that was recorded for posterity. So thank you for making sure that we got that recorded, Donna.
Okay, all right. So does anybody else have anything to say about the minutes or the report?
No.
No, hearing nothing then. Could I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agendas from both the October and November meetings.
Second. John, thank you. Okay, so let's take a vote. Let's start with Sarah because she's in my upper left corner.
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
John? You must be muted, John. But I can see that you did that.
Aye. Aye, 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 aye.
And Sharon?
Yes, in favor.
And I vote yes as well. So that was unanimous. Thank you. So now we're going to go, we're going to have the welcome to anyone who wants to join in. And we're going to be speaking with Casey first for a while and then because we missed her last month. And then after that, Kristy David. So Casey, what do you got to say?
Well, I'll keep it quick today because I don't want to take too much of Kirsty's time up. Just to give you guys a brief update since our last meeting, our passport program was audited by the State Department. This is something that happens regularly biannually, but our last biannual audit was, we didn't have it because of COVID. So we hadn't had one in four years. So we were due for an audit. So what happens is a member of the State Department of the Fraud Task Force comes to the library and sees our process and how we work and sits down and does an interview and a test with multiple of our agents. So it was myself, Patty Bailey, and one of our new agents, Nicole Dana, that sat down with the agent. We were there for about three hours. It's quite a lengthy process, but we all passed with flying colors. And we also received a certificate of excellence from the State Department for our program. So that was really good news. We also received our recertification process for 2024. This happens yearly and all of the agents have to take an online training again. It takes about two to four hours. And we have to file those certificates with the state on an annual basis. And I'll be doing that sometime in January to file that for our program. All the agents that were on last year are continuing on for this year. So we'll have a nice experience group of agents this year and certainly more availability for our patrons. We're currently doing passports Monday through Friday and three evenings a week as well. Budget wise, you'll see from our reports that the budget's also looking really good this year. We're about forty-two percent spent, or forty-two percent of the year has completed. And we're about forty percent spent on our municipal funding. So we're right on track for that. For our donations and our Friends programming budget, we're completely spent on all the donations we received in 2023. So we'll be asking, Clayton will be reaching out to the Friends in the next coming weeks to replenish our programming budget. We also completed two grants just recently. We finished our last one today for the NCC Artisan Residence and the LSTA Go Local Oral History Grant. We completed both of those between September, October, and November, and we just started two new ones. We have a Mass Cultural Council grant that we're starting with adult services. And we also received some money from the Ernie Bach Fund for children's. So those will be two new grants you'll see in our special funds report. And the revolving fund with Passport Execution Fees continues to bring in about a thousand dollars a month after our copier fees, which also comes out of that account. So that's continuing to create a little buffer in our budget. So everything's looking good.
Thank you.
And if anyone has any questions about those budget reports, feel free to reach out to me at any time.
Thank you so much for that.
Yes, thank you, Casey. I always love the opportunity when everyone gets to speak and especially, well, everyone, but I, you know, we see each other every day and it's not every day that I get to sing your praises in front of an audience like tonight. So I just want to make sure that while you are in the background through all of our meetings here, the level of support that you provide, the attention to detail, the kindness, the unflappable nature that you take everything in stride is just a wonderful asset to the library and to the Norman community. And so just want to make sure everybody knows how much you are appreciated by myself and I know many, many others.
I get to have my hands in most things that every department does. So I get to see a nice overview of everything that everyone's doing. It's a nice perspective.
Okay. So I'm glad you said all that, Clayton, because I'm never very eloquent about things like that, even though I think I'm. Let's move on to Kristy. Kristy?
Kristy? Hey, everybody. So I just wanted to touch on two departments tonight because I'm working in both literacy and outreach. And I know that you all will get a chance to see Norma a few months hence, but I just wanted to give you a real brief update. Since the last time I saw you, we have about the same number of tutors are active right now. Sixty-seven at this point versus sixty last December. We have fifty-five of those tutors are matched and twelve of them are pending. We're about to be matching them with folks. The biggest thing to say about the current tutors is that a lot of them are working with more than one student. So that's a different trend than we have seen in years past. And we're very excited that people have been rising to the occasion. One of our newest trainees in, I want to say, late spring of this year. Linda is a retired doctor who said that she spoke a little bit of French. So she stepped right into our net when all of our most recent students are, the highest percentage are Haitian immigrants because of the Biden Administration Porelly Program. And so we said, well, if you speak French, would you be willing to take on more than one student for us? And right now she's up to five. She has now a small group of students and she's probably about to take two more. So we're very excited for people that have, you know, really stepped in. And there's one other exciting story that I wanted to talk about tonight. You all have seen it in our past reports. But we had the general manager of Four Points, Sheridan, reach out to us months ago and ask us if we would consider having one of our tutors do onsite tutoring there. She, she had, has many English language learning employees. And she really wanted to help them out and develop them as, you know, people, as employees, but like just to give them a leg up. So we found a tutor that was willing to do an offsite group. The group started in November. There are nine students. And the, the biggest thing to talk about here is that they are paying these employees to attend these English classes. So they're really trying to support this. They want it to be a success. And so far it's been received really well. And our tutor Sharon, who's running the group, came to us and said, listen, I know the pilot only goes for three months, but I want to keep these students. I need to teach them more English. So let's talk about what's going to happen after that. So it's really, it's going strong and we're going to have a second group start at the Sheridan in January. And it's going to be a different level. It's going to be beginner level. And it's going to be with a tutor that speaks Portuguese and Spanish. And so we're hopeful that that will come in handy with the, with the beginner level. So that's the most exciting thing for literacy and Norma will be able to brief you all on how the second class goes when she sees you in her board meeting. The other thing that I wanted to switch over to is in outreach, we also had an uptick in the number of people that were serving, the number of regular deliveries to patrons. We added nine new home delivery patrons this year in 2023. And unfortunately, we also had two people pass away. But we're, so we're serving right now twenty-five regular patrons with twelve volunteers. The, I just want to give a shout out to both the literacy department volunteers and the outreach volunteers. They are some of the most amazing people. They do such great work for the library. And I just, they keep coming to me for more and I just, I don't, you know, I don't know how to express how grateful I am that they, they want to help more. So we, we recently, the one exciting program that I wanted to talk about for outreach was that we recently did a holiday card signing that we sent out to not only our homebound delivery patrons, but also I reached out to the Norwood Housing Authority locations. And I asked them if they had any people in need of some holiday cheer. So I got some additional names this year. The last time we did this was in 2019 at the Holiday Tree Lighting. We had a card, an impromptu card signing and sent some stuff to just our patrons. This year it was sixty names. The first time we did it was half that. And we had such participation from staff that I also want to shout out to the staff who all jumped in and addressed some of these cards because we had about ten people that participated at the Holiday Tree Lighting that were children and their parents, and they were all into it. They loved it. But then we had all these extra cards to sign and send. And the staff really came up to the plate and, and had a good time, I think. Clayton could probably go more into that, but like I think we all, we all had a good time spreading the cheer. So we'll, we'll do that again next year and we'll probably try to make it even a little bit bigger next year because I talked to Jen Bradley at the high school who runs the high school book group. And she said that she was looking for a little bit of intergenerational programming for her high school folks. So we'll try to pull them into the web next year and make it a little bit bigger. Then one final thing, and I'm sorry I'm going on and on, but one final thing I wanted to say, a thanks to Clayton. And prior to Clayton, Charlotte did the same thing. But the culture of developing employees at this library is like second to none. And I really appreciate all of the opportunities that we get on a regular basis to be developed as staff. And I just, I look over the last year and all of the different things that I've participated in, both for outreach training and literacy training, but also just training in general. I went to a first aid training at the police department. And that is totally outside of my sphere, but definitely appreciated by me. And I just wanted to say thanks for that culture of employee development here.
So I, I just think that what you're doing is great. I'm so pleased about the Four Points thing. You must be so happy about that. I was so touched by your holiday card thing. That was just wonderful, just wonderful. So thank you very much.
I have a question. So I think I agree that Sheridan program sounds terrific and it's wonderful that you're able to coordinate with volunteers, help support that. I'm curious, is, have you, has that happened anywhere else? Have you heard about it? Or is that like something unique for Norwood to have that type of a partnership with a business like that?
You know, I'm not sure. I can't say for certain whether any one of the other eleven affiliates for Literacy Volunteers of Massachusetts, I'm not sure of all of their histories and what they've participated in. I know that more recently what's been happening is people are trying to figure out how to serve folks that are being housed at hotels, but I'm not certain if people are working with businesses. And oddly enough, right after we spoke with Chumala Ghosh, who is the general manager at Four Points, like maybe a week or so after that, we were contacted by another Norwood business, cabinet business, who themselves wanted to support their English language learners that worked for them. It's not, I don't think the same level of support is there because there's like one human resources person. So she, she was just starting. She was five weeks into the job and she was just starting. But I think that there's an opportunity to do that more with local businesses, you know, under the right circumstances. I would be surprised if others had not done it at this point, but you bring up an interesting question. I'm going to bring that to my next coordinator's meeting for the literacy volunteers.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I think it's fabulous. And there's probably a lot of questions around the program. It sounds like it's pretty organic as it's developed. If, you know, you're, they're coming back and wanting to continue it. So you're learning as you go, which is great. So yeah, it'd be interesting to know if others do it or if it's something that could be modeled.
Good point.
Marguerite, I know you're a volunteer. Do you have anything to, you want to add to that? You're muted.
The tutors themselves could never do their job without Norma or Kirsty helping us every step of the way and providing outside speakers to come in and help us with, with their programs that they give us. But every time we need help, we just walk into the office, interrupt their day and say, help. I need, my student needs this and I can't find the, you know, the literature to help me to get them to where they need to be and boom. Right then and there, at their fingertips, they have what we need and they help us immediately. And, and not only do they help us with what we need, they, they support us. And it's, they're just amazing people. There are other people too, Tina, and then there's another woman who I haven't met. But I've never, I've never felt alone as a tutor. The literacy staff, Norma, Kirsty, Tina have been a remarkable trio of people. And, and it's, it's just amazing that, that the, the resources that they have available at their fingertips because of their knowledge base, their expertise is unflagging. And their, their ability to know each and every student, each and every tutor and what they need is amazing. So thank you.
Thank you.
John? John?
Yes, thanks, Donna. I assume we've got a master list of all the people who've been tutored over the years. I'm wondering whether, since it's been going on so long and it's gotten so large, whether there'd be any value to calling some of the alumni, finding out what's happened with them, seeing if any of their experiences after being tutored are particularly attractive role models for people who might be thinking of getting tutoring, but aren't really sure what it could do for them and just how valuable it might be in the long term.
Interesting. We actually have been contacted by former students who reach out to us and ask us if they can tutor now. So that's, that's one, one great recommendation. But, you know, Norma and I have recently been giving lots of thought to how we connect some of the new immigrants with opportunities, like they're, they're looking for jobs. How do we connect them? And, you know, what you're suggesting, John, might be an interesting sort of mentoring kind of network opportunity. It, you know, it sounds a little daunting and complexity, but I think it would be really helpful to, to, as another resource for students. So I'd, I'd be interested in pursuing that. You know, we, we reach out to like Mass Hire and other locations to try to, to, you know, fix students up with work opportunities, but sometimes they're reaching right back to us and saying, well, these, these people don't know English yet, so we're going to send them to you. So it's like this, this propagating circle. So I think you're right. There might be some unexamined opportunities there with former students.
I think what, if I'm hearing you right, I think we're on the same page that one of the, the most valuable things we might discover in talking to alumni is examples of how they're being tutored and learning English allowed them to qualify for higher level jobs than the ones they had held and to flourish in those new jobs.
Yeah, that is a frequent goal of folks in the program, you know, they're, you know, it's, it's a progression. And a lot of students will start out just wanting to be understood, to, to, you know, understand spoken English and to be understood themselves. But then it sort of ramps up from there and before long you're hearing them say, well, I'd like to get a different job because I'd like to, I'd like to get paid more or I'd like to do more of what I want to do. And so I think, you know, there's a logical progression there and, and there's definitely, you know, room to explore, like, you know, why remake the wheel if somebody knows how to do the path, you know, an easier way? So yeah, I think that sounds smart.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to say? Oh, Clayton, yes.
And so, thank you, Kirsty. I am, yeah, I'm really excited right now so that everybody knows. Kirsty and Norma and folks are doing some surveys of our active students to capture. There's, there's a couple of different surveys that are going on and they have to do surveys both for DESI and for LVM. But we have a specific survey for our strategic plan where we're looking at exactly those kinds of metrics, John, to understand, you know, what kind of goals they've set for themselves and have managed to accomplish. And we'll be, I'm sure, harvesting individual examples from that to, for future inspiration. And to know, to demonstrate the effectiveness of what we're doing. So we're definitely all aligned and thinking that there are some great stories here. What we need to do is figure out how do we, while protecting people's privacy, celebrate these accomplishments. So super excited to do that. Something that I've heard you say a few times when we were talking about the cards, that maybe you said it so quickly and everybody else heard it, but I missed it tonight because I've heard it before, but I don't, I think we skipped over it. Which is one of the inspirations for doing all the holiday cards that Kirsty was talking about a few minutes ago, was a, a number of years ago, having just sent a card to somebody who was at home and then getting feedback from that person that they were so grateful because it was the only card they received that year. And really taking that, that notion that sometimes the interactions with Kirsty and all the people that she's helping support are making a profound difference in people's lives as sometimes the only point of human contact in this season, which can be full of great joy and celebration, but also very isolating and lonely for other people. And so to know that collectively we are working to combat that loneliness and, and, you know, help, you know, forge stronger connections to each other in our community is just, these are the kind of life fulfilling stories that are why we come and do what we do. So Kirsty, I know that's just a small little example of the way that your work is touching people individually who then are, you know, able to reach out because they were feeling a little less lonely and talking to other people in their family they may have lost touch with. And it has this real ripple effect through our community that I'm just so grateful for. And it, it comes from such, I know that you spend so much time every day thinking about how to focus your efforts to make those kinds of impacts. And it's, it's incredibly meaningful and I'm so grateful for it in the spirit in which you do it. So thank you for, for sharing a little bit with us, with us tonight.
Thanks, Clayton.
Okay, so thank you very much, Kristy. Okay, so Clayton, do you have anything about personnel reports or programming you'd like to speak about?
The main pieces on personnel, well, it's been in the report, but we're very excited to have our new head of borrower services start next Monday evening. Michael Roderick has been running the circulation department in Cohasset. His last day there is on Thursday. He's actually going to join us for a little staff holiday celebration Friday morning and then come and join us full time next Monday. So we're looking forward to having him join us. The contract updates, I understand that negotiations have begun in town between, I believe Public Safety is talking with, with town management administration right now. So things are starting to line up, but they have not started with our union yet. So that is forthcoming. Related, well, I don't know if it's related or not, but facilitated by Town HR is the ethics training, which I believe everyone has taken and completed, but if you have not, we are, we need to make sure that's all done. All of our staff have completed all the ethics trainings, but just this morning Lisa, for the head of HR was, you know, reinforcing that everyone who's doing any work for town needs to complete the ethics training before the end of the year. So the calendar is ticking to a close. So if you still need support, getting that done, let me know. I'm happy to provide that support or help you find that support from somewhere else. John?
I'm scheduled to do it, but I haven't done it yet. So this is me popping to the fact that I'm the last one through the door.
We won't make anyone else self disclose during, I wasn't trying to go there. I wasn't trying to make, name names at all. Please just go and complete it. It's, it's a state requirement that everybody associated, do anything with town is doing so ethically and means that we ensure that that's happening is by having everybody go through that training process. So for no other reason than we're just meeting a state requirement. I have no concerns about how any of us are acting. That's, it's just something we need to do. So that is pretty much it on personnel and contract. On the programming report, if I can skip forward, there's a lot of fun stuff happening right now. I encourage people to come by the library. I'm sorry. It did not work for us to be in person tonight, although I'm very grateful that we can all join from the places we are this evening. The Book Tree is up and it's a wonder to behold. It's the 10th Annual Book Tree. And there is a running contest to see who can guess how many books are in it. We told all the staff that they can certainly guess, but there is a prize for whoever gets closest and staff are not eligible. So I would, we, I'll let you decide as, as trustees, if you wish to do that, but you can certainly get bragging rights. I have nothing else. If you can guess how many books are in the Book Tree. So we have lots of folks coming by and it's, it's really fun. I want to give a good shout out to Kate Chan and the folks who, I think Nicole helped out with that. I'm sure Patty, the other folks in tech services, Lydia helped out a hand. But Kate was our main architect, as she's been for several years and did a great job. So. And as we look forward, there's lots of things on our calendar, but a little sneak peek for something to look forward in January. Just yesterday, I was actually asked, we've had a lot of members of the public asking for more information and for some programs about artificial intelligence and ChatGPT. Just trying to understand what's it all about. You can certainly, if you're paying attention at all to the news, you can't avoid it. But there's still some confusion. Lots of folks don't know what it is. So I was asked, I've attended several trainings and I've done some playing with it myself, if I would personally lead a training in that in January. I mentioned that at this morning's town department head meeting. And Tony asked if I would do a short presentation for all the department heads at the end of January. So if anyone's interested in attending, either when we do the public one or you'd like to have some private conversations about OpenAI, artificial intelligence, ChatGPT, and the, the greater landscape there, or if you have specific expertise and would like to share those with me so I can share them with everyone else. I'm certainly still learning a lot myself. But I think I know enough to share and, and bring us to, you know, help raise everyone up a bit. But please do identify and let me know if you've got some more. I'm happy to, I'm, I'm going to do a lot of learning before I present, I'm sure. So on the maintenance and repair front, which is the next item on the agenda, there's a couple of HVAC issues. We're still waiting on parts, but the building is maintaining temperature, which is a big concern as the temperatures get cold. uh, which is a big concern as the temperatures get cold. Uh, we're actually having a bigger challenge now where we just have to manually turn up and down uh for a couple of different zones in the library and make sure folks remember to turn them up and down. They consistently are remembering to turn them up. Uh, but sometimes it gets quite warm, as we experienced a couple of weeks ago, because things got busy and all of a sudden we were all sweating. So uh, but it's uh, it'll be nice when we can get that fixed. I'm not sure the timing on those repairs. Uh, and there's a couple of other issues that Jim has mentioned in his report. There will be some elevator maintenance issues at some point, which could be disruptive for a day or two. Um, they're waiting on some parts. So I'll I'll keep your prizes if I get any advance notice on when that's gonna happen. But that's pretty much what I have. If there's any questions on any of those reports, I'm I'm happy to field them at this time.
I don't have any questions. Anyone else?
The Friends have been doing great, but I'm not the best person to give the Friends report. George, I don't know if you've talked to any of the folks at the Friends as our liaison. I know you've had uh some, you've had a complicated life for the last couple of months.
Complicated life, yes, but um just indirectly, no, I I've heard that uh things have been progressing well with the book donations uh with the sale of the books. They're all still very excited about their little book sale room, and it it appears to be doing very well. I know that um last I heard, they were trying to work out some logistical issues about what to do with donations when they come into the library. But um the meeting is tomorrow night, so I'll be in attendance and we'll um we'll get up to speed with um everything that's going on there. And of course, for their planning for future fundraisers and whatnot, but um as far as I know, everything's going smoothly. And um um Casey, I don't know what our latest, what the latest donations were um from the book sale room.
Uh, I think we're still averaging about three hundred a month.
Okay.
So pretty consistent to what we're making before.
Yeah, that's good. Good.
Okay. Moving on, we all saw the correspondence in the packet. I'm sure Clayton has something he'd like to say about that.
Oh, it's always fun to share the praise that comes especially from the folks doing passports and notaries. That's a a very valued service. Um, there's actually, I want to give a sneak peek uh to a piece of correspondence that will be in the next month's packet. Um, but it's a piece of financial correspondence that just came in this week, which is why it wasn't in the packet that I sent. Um, and it's that we have uh officially been uh awarded the state aid again this year, so that will be forthcoming. Um, but if you saw that they they do it in a couple of waves, and for some reason, we're always in the second wave. Well, that wave, that that meeting was last week and we were approved, so state aid is on the way. And we'll have documentation of that in the the next correspondence section. I don't know if there's any other pieces of correspondence that you were thinking of, Donna. I'm happy to talk about it.
It's on the agenda, so I figured I'd have you talk about it.
Yep, that's fair.
Okay. So anybody have anything they wanted to say about correspondence? No? Okay, moving on to old business. We have the committees. Okay, so George, did you have another meeting of the uh?
No, I have not.
Okay. Well, I knew you were ill, so I was wondering.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll have to um reconfigure, figure out what we're, what they um, we'll have to get together again and um and move this forward. Um, so we can um schedule that and um sometime I obviously with the holidays coming up, that might be difficult, but um I think as soon as possible is probably the best best way to handle this. So um, so we can talk offline with the the subcommittee can um we'll set that up through Casey, and then we can figure out um when to meet and move that process forward as quickly as possible.
And and it just as a point of order, when we do any subcommittee meeting of moving forward, we realized that we were going around the last one, that because of the, you know, if uh with a a a board of six people, if there's a subcommittee of three and then Donna, who has chair, who uh can attend any of them, there's four people, that's a quorum for the entire board, which can be making decisions, uh certainly is a subject to open meeting law requirements. We will make sure anytime the subcommittee meets, that everybody on the board gets an invitation. Uh, and personal invitation just to make sure that everybody's on, you know, wishes to participate. They're certainly welcome to their public meetings. So.
That's okay.
Hmm. Also, Clayton and I were talking about um last month, we didn't have a quorum. And uh so Clayton has now, as you may have noticed, instigated the idea of RSVPing to when we're gonna come to the meeting and, you know, I mean, certainly somebody's gonna be sick at the last minute. That's what happens, but we just want to make sure that everyone is aware there is a meeting, and the same is true with the subcommittees. When we send out or Casey sends out invitation to everybody on the board, you wouldn't least need to know what members of the board, not the board, the committee. When she sends an invitation out to any one of the committees, all six members would get it, but the only the members of the board have to RSVP. Because if you don't have a quorum, you can't have the uh meeting. So okay, do we have any other committees that are doing anything active?
Um, you know, I have mentioned a couple of times, we'll have a meeting of the uh finance committee. Uh, and I think we should do that. Uh, I included in this packet, uh and it's down, it's it's included in the packet under new business. Um, the draft budget for FY25. So I think uh with that in the packet, uh we should, I'll work with Casey and organize a meeting in the finance committee, just so we can review that. Uh, Tony will be pulling it together and presenting it, I believe, to, I've been told, to a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Town Finance Committee at their March meeting. Uh, so we have a little bit of time, but I think the finance committee, so that uh there's an opportunity to give any feedback to Tony uh before that, that, you know, larger public meeting. Uh do, we should have a meeting in early January so we can review that draft budget.
Okay.
I see John has his hand up, Donna.
Oh, I'm sorry, John. I looked away. Go ahead.
Uh, little assistance on communications. When on the agenda, say, when it lists the three committees, it would be good if in parentheses, you had the names of the people on each committee for those who aren't keeping track as closely. And it would be good if we mentioned that on these open meetings. So if there's anybody who decides to tune in, they can feel like they know what's going on.
Well, John, the open meetings are posted at Town Hall. They're posted on the library um agenda, not agenda, events calendar. However, they're not posted at the beginning of the month because they're not always set up by the beginning of the month. And um everybody who's on our board will get the thing, the invitation. But I I follow your point here of you, the public knowing about it, but the, that's the um protocol the town uses anyway. If you want to go to a planning board meeting, you know, they they put theirs a lot of times in the newspaper. I don't think we need to do that. But they also post everything, planning board, uh Board of Appeals, all of that is posted at Town Hall. So Jo- uh Clayton?
I would also recommend uh that if anybody does have any questions about the composition or what's happening in these committee meetings, they should certainly. Uh, I would think the first point would be either to address uh the the board chair, uh Donna or myself. Um, and we can certainly help field those rather than exposing everyone to a a barrage of questions. Certainly everyone's an elected official and and answerable to the 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 general public of the of town. Um, but we can help focus those and as chairs of those subcommittees are chosen by the subcommittees, uh we can help direct questions appropriately. Um, so I would encourage folks to to start with Donna and myself. And if any members of the of the of the board are trying to remember exactly which board, which uh committee you're on, uh you can also talk to Donna and I, and we can help you sort that out.
Okay. All right. So anything else on that? No? All right. Uh support for the cultural districts.
So I can give an update on that. Uh, so uh there was a presentation at the library last Monday evening uh that was led by RT uh from the Norwood Cultural Council. Uh, and Mary Paz was there, uh Ishan was there from the Cultural Council. Joe Collins would have been there, um but he had some some personal family matters he had to tend to. Uh, he is a new father, actually, since that time. There's been a very exciting development. Uh, so he will be taking the lead. Joe is the uh Director of Economic Development for the Town of Norwood, for folks who don't know Joe. Um, and he and Sarah Dixon, the head of the Planning Department, are going to be taking lead on developing on the the, on the development for the, for Norwood Cultural District or districts. Um, I've actually been invited to a meeting with Sarah tomorrow afternoon uh to meet with a couple of community members who were at that uh community meeting last week. Uh, it it's actually Bob Donnelly and another community member. Uh, and and Sarah and I are gonna meet tomorrow afternoon. Um, more just kind of figuring out, doing some some initial planning and and thinking about uh next steps. So um, I can, I I will certainly report back to the, to our board, uh to to you uh if, when, and and how much support is gonna be most helpful for this development process. Um, and I think that's probably the the best way to move forward with supporting an oral cultural district is uh we're positioned to certainly have a seat at the table uh at the library. Uh, would certainly include us in any cultural district, especially around Norwood Center. Um, and it's right now a matter of keeping our ears to the ground and and being at that table as we continue to have these preliminary conversations to see exactly how the districts develop and and how it can be most instrumental in their crafting. So things are continuing to develop, basically, but it is really nice to see uh Joe and Sarah step up and take a leadership role in this development.
Good, good. Anybody have any comments about that? Okay. All right. So we're moving on to the food pantry collection. Um, that's going along swimmingly. Um, we're getting a few bags a week or deliveries of, I would say deliveries a week. Uh, the volunteer is taking to the food pantry. So I'm happy with it. People have a place to drop off their unwanted food and a place for it to go. So so I was thinking, Clayton, we probably, because it's working along, we probably don't need to keep putting it on the agenda.
That's fine. That's great. We have updated some of the internal posters that you and I have talked about too, just to make it clear that uh, you know, which bins we're talking about. So
Oh, okay, yes.
Everybody is coming. There are two bins just inside the door from the parking lot. Uh, the main doors that most people use when they walk into the library. Um, if you just look to the right, uh, there there's two bins there where we're accepting donations for the Norwood Food Pantry and the Nafonton Valley Animal Shelter. And we are appreciative that we can help facilitate uh keeping people fed, people and animals.
They're they're on a table because we don't, we want to dissuade the mice from climbing up, and there are nice locking plastic boxes for the same reason. So okay. Patrons in the library.
We continue to have lots of patrons coming into the library. Uh, we do ask, uh, we, I I should do a a public service announcement. Just yesterday, we had somebody come in um with a dog. Uh, we have, there is a a prohibition against anything but service animals. Uh, so I was sharing a photo of that uh with the people. Uh, I'm gonna be sharing a photo with that of that individual who came with a dog yesterday to see if we can identify them and encourage them to please leave the dog at home or someplace else safe rather than bringing a dog that's not a service animal into the library. Um, so that's just a a kind announcement. We many of us are dog lovers and would love to have them actually come and join us in the library if we could. I know that we just got a holiday card from the airport and there's a lovely airport dog who's there regularly. Um, but we're not able to welcome our furry friends in the library unless they're service animals. So that's the main main topic on that issue this month.
I've noticed since the pandemic, when all these people adopt adopted pets, that they take their dogs with them everywhere. And I like the dogs, but I feel bad for the animals in some of the places that they take them because the animals are bored and yipping and, you know, they're just not happy. And uh, and then, of course, some places, it's just not appropriate. I mean, it was a a uh person who brought a great big dog into the laundromat when there was little kids in there, and I, oh my word. And so she was very good. She she took the dog right outside when I said something. But hmm, so yeah, but the dogs are wonderful. I just wish that, you know, we could uh accommodate them, but it's some places, it's just not good. Okay, new business.
We, I should put in a plug for Mustang Sally. Uh, you know, if if people are, you know, Mustang Sally is certainly welcome as as a, you know, as a town employee, I should say. Uh, and so people may come and encounter Mustang Sally in the library and other service animals as well.
Yes, I got a Christmas card from Mustang Sally, which I put up on the wall. So, all right, on to new business. So, oh yeah, we want to set the dates for two meetings, April and June.
Exactly. I can explain the April meeting. Uh, there, so Heath uh has been asked to present at the Public Library Association Annual Conference, uh which is happening the very first week in April. Uh, so a number of us are going as we have to. This is a conference that happens every two years, and right now, our meeting is scheduled for the Tuesday after that conference. Uh, so the the idea of getting a packet together and ready while remote uh is daunting uh in addition to all the travel. Um, it's also right after a major uh eclipse, in which I'm actually taking a couple of days to to go up and and witness that eclipse. Uh, so there's a few uh an additional complication in April. So if there is an ability to move with calendars, that meeting, I would suggest even just back one week to the third week in April or the third Tuesday in April. I don't, I I see that's, Sarah's, yeah, that does not work for you, I can tell. So.
The third Tuesday in April is during April break week for those of us with students still in Norwood Public Schools. So I would prefer not to move it to that week.
The, maybe on the Friday of the week of the ninth, which would be what? I mean, if we could meet on a Friday, even if it was remote, would that work for you, Sarah? Or why don't you suggest a date?
I can't see that far in my future.
Well, I just pulled out the Norwood Public School calendar because I figured that moving it out that week, it it's usually attached to Patriots Day. Patriots Day is that fifteenth.
Um About
Well George and I are the only two here that have students in that age bracket, Casey as well. Um, it may be that if my family is not available, then I'm simply not available for the meeting. And that's okay, too. I am one member of a six-member board.
Another possibility, and and thank you, Sarah, for making that concession, but I'd certainly like to schedule meetings when we can all be there if at all possible. Um, the, there are five Tuesdays in April, and the second Tuesday in May is is pretty late. It's gonna be the fourteenth, almost as late as a third, as a second Tuesday can be. It would not be, I don't think, ridiculous to consider uh uh doing it on the twenty-third um and having our April meeting on the twenty-third instead. Um, it would keep it to a Tuesday night, which would fit into uh into that and would avoid the the school break. So for consideration.
So how do people feel about that? What do you think about the twenty-third? Everybody's sitting there with like a little stern face. So is that a
Sure, that's fine. It doesn't matter to me. Um, I need, anything you pick and work.
Yeah, yeah, no, it looks fine to me.
All right. So anybody opposed to this? Okay. All right, then. I think we have a date for that one, Clayton. And then the one in June.
The one in June, we just had a uh a complication, and it would be easier to do it any other night that week of June eleventh than the Tuesday night. So Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, uh any of those are preferable because of it, just this conflict that we have. So I would, I was just gonna ask with this much advance notice if there was possible to shift it to a different night of the week for that June meeting.
So Sarah, pull out the handy calendar and see if you've got anything on it for school.
I would prefer not to do it on the Thursday.
All right. And so what about the Wednesday? So Wednesday would be the twelfth, I believe.
Mm-hmm. The thirteenth.
Wednesday is uh is June twelfth.
Oh, okay. I'm I'm looking at the next month. Sorry, I'm looking at March, not June. So.
Wednesdays are often uh meeting dates for other committees and the like in in Norwood. I'm thinking the Monday might be a little safer.
Oh, Monday has a lot of meetings that I actually go to, planning board and so on. But um
What about Friday?
Oh, at the end of the week, I'll be dead. Oh, Lord. Excuse me.
I would prefer not to meet on that Friday.
Okay. My concern about My concern about Wednesday was more hypothetical than definite. So.
Yeah.
It is far enough away that we could pencil it in for the Wednesday and look at other committee meetings and reconsider this and, you know, at the January meeting. We have some time.
Okay.
We're penciling it in as the 12th then?
Well, okay, John, I don't understand your concern. Do you, do you think that other people will not, will want to go to other meetings or that other meeting people want to come to us? Or are you just saying that you think that people will miss watching us on the, on the TV? What, what is it?
None of the above. I, I'm going by past experience in other years. I've found that when scheduling meetings that all kinds of hell seem to break loose on Wednesdays. But the past is not a perfect guide to the future. And a definite conflict trumps a potential conflict. So I brought it up to see if anybody had a real conflict on Wednesday or could see one coming. I didn't hear anyone who did. So.
Okay. All right. So why don't we ink it in? And then if somebody comes up with a conflict, you can erase the ink and put a pencil mark.
That sounds good. And in terms of conflicts, I mean, we should point out that right now the Board of Selectmen is meeting. And this morning Sarah Dixon reported that of the last 10 nights, her staff has staffed meetings on nine of those nights. So there's potential to be a conflict any night anymore in Norwood. So that's
Yeah.
the landscape.
All right. So we, so we'll June 12th, which is a Wednesday. And if anybody comes up with some problem, just let Clayton know or Casey or me or someone. Okay. All right. So we have, do we have any other new business Clayton?
I have not brought any. I don't know if anyone else has any new business that they like to add.
Anybody have anything? Okay. Clayton, search warrants.
There have been no search warrants since we last met.
Miscellaneous advisories.
I have none of those either.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a remark? In that case, can I have a motion? To adjourn. John?
We'll adjourn.
Okay. Seconded by George. So all those in favor, say aye or.
We have to go around.
Yeah.
To go around. I know. I forgot Zoom, you have to go around. Okay, Sarah?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
John?
Hi.
Sherry?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Thank you all very much.